I hope you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're enjoying your newfound miracle bliss.
He's trying to be low key about it. He's trying to be low key.
Yeah, low key. You're embarrassing me now, so.
Well, lucky couple. If you find that kind of love in your life, just count your blessings.
Yeah, thank you.
Turn it a little red there, sir.
Congratulations, congratulations, Donald. Can you hear me? Yes, thank you. We are still waiting for a few people, is that right? The chancellor and which trustee or trustees are still missing? Anyone?
I think all the trustees are here, except for Kalina, who I understand will not be joining us tonight. Is that correct?
That's right. All of January she is not available, but she'll be back February.
Thank you.
Madam President, if you want to start, she should be back by the time we get either through roll call or through the pledge of allegiance legions.
Is that what we want to do? Okay, let us start. And we are already recording, right?
That is correct.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Proalti community. Thank you for your patience and our tardiness in coming back to you. Let's call to order the meeting at six oh eight. And let us do the pledge of allegiance to trustee Jenkins. You lead us in the pledge of allegiance when the flag is up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Hogan?
I don't think she's still a student trustee.
Here, I'm here. Hi.
Student trustee Cooper?
Thank you.
Student trustee Cooper, are you here? Trustee Withrow? Trustee Jenkins?
Here.
Trustee Handy?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Here.
Trustee Bonia is absent. Trustee Delphine Polk? Trustee Delphine Polk? I see you're on the call. Can you hear us?
Is that me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon.
Thank you, trustee Polk, Delphine Polk. And yes, I am here.
You have a forum.
Great, thank you. Let's go to four point four affirmation of the statement of cooperation. Could you post that, please? I'll read from my other computer. Thank you. As per usual, until we have an abbreviated version, this is the statement of cooperation that the board members signed that we use and we read at the beginning of our board meeting to to remind us of how we need to behave and speak and talk and communicate during our board meetings. Number one, the board is continuing to work on trust in and among our members. Number two, we agree to listen and seek to understand others at opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district students. Number three, we commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols when we seek additional information. Members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to board policy two, three, four, zero for adding items to the agenda. Number four, we have reviewed the board's code of ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and guidelines we are to follow in our role. Number five, if the code of ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one on one between and among members before moving to the formal process. Number six, we agree that from time to time, the chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for a recess or redirect members if they stray from the topic of discussion. Number seven, we collectively recognize that it is within the duties and authority of the chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track in adherence to board policy. Number eight, we will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves. And number nine, we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Thank you. Let's move on to four point five report of action taken in closed session. Vice President Delphine Polk or trustee Jenkins?
Madam President, I'll be doing the closed session report for the vice president. So, Madam President, at tonight's closed session, the board voted on the following item, three point two, public employee appointment. So, we have the recommendation to appoint David Nugan as the acting director of financial aid, College of Alameda, at one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven annually, effective January twenty-six, twenty twenty-two through March thirty, twenty twenty-two, or until the position is filled. The position reports to the vice president of student services. We also have the recommendation to appoint Gary Aubrey as the associate dean of educational success at Laney College at one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one fifty-seven annually, effective January twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The position reports to the vice president of student services. We also have the recommendation to extend the appointment of Adil Ahmed as the executive director of physical service at the district office at a salary of one hundred and one eight, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight annually, from February twenty-six, twenty twenty-two through June twenty, twenty twenty-four. The position reports to the vice chancellor of finance and administration. Mister Ahmed is currently serving as the interim vice chancellor of finance and administration until the position is filled on a permanent basis. We also have the recommendation to extend the appointment of Harazon Odom Bo, forgive me if I butchered the name, as the benefits manager, district office at one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven annually, through January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Mister Odenbo's current contract will expire June twenty, twenty twenty-three, and the position reports to the vice chancellor of human resources and employee relations.
We.
All right, I'm good. Now I'm good.
We also have the recommendation to extend the appointment of Elizabeth Mayer as the dean of academic and student affairs at Laney College at one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen annually, effective March twenty-three, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. The position reports to the vice president of instruction. The recommend, we also have the recommendation to extend the appointment of William Ramos Ocha, Ocha, as the director of gateway to college at Laney College at one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven annually, effective February fifth, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. The position reports to the vice president of student success. And last but not least, we have the recommendation to appoint Reza Malazi as the interim dean of STEM College of Alameda at one hundred and forty-five thousand, two sixty-two annually, effective January three, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This part, this position reports to the vice president of instruction. So, we had a motion by trustee Withrow. It was seconded by trustee Handy. We had six A's. Eyes, Withrow, Handy, Jenkins, Delphine Polk, Gonzalez, you in, Cindy, Nafabella Reese, zero no's, and one abstain, one absent. Trustee Bonia. Madam President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins, and welcome to all of our new appointments. Congratulations on the renewal of your appointments. All right, let's move on to four point six approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins, and thank you, trustee Withrow. Discussion, I just need to pull one item. Let's pull out seven point three. And let's do roll call.
Interesting.
Reads for clarification.
Did I do that correctly, Gonzales?
I'm just for clarification, are you removing it from the agenda entirely or moving it into discussion?
Into discussion.
Thank you. Okay, so, thank you. So, off consent into discussion. Okay.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia is absent. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Four point eight approval of the minutes from the board retreat. May I have a motion for that?
Oh, I'm sorry to interject. I'm sorry, you're, you're fine. I apologize. You're okay.
Okay, okay. Trustee Jenkins first, second, trustee Withrow. And the roll call, please.
And trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Highlight of the evening, four point nine, associated student government report. Do we have any student leaders in the room?
I'm sorry, Chancellor, President, I did interject correctly. You missed item four point six, which is the, or four point seven, which is the approval of the minutes. Four point eight is approval of the minutes from the board retreat.
You are absolutely right.
Apologize.
Four point, okay, so we will go back to four point nine in a second. Pardon me all, let's go to four point seven. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minute?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Okay, let's do roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, let's go back to our student leaders. Who do we have in the room?
Have Harry Mapadili, and I will move him over, promote him to panelist. Should be with us.
Also from Laney, Bilal Hamran is in the, in the waiting room as well.
Okay, thank you. There we go. Okay, they are in the room now. You guys, Harry, you can speak first. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board and guests. I'm pleased to say the ASPPCC will be meeting on the first week of the semester, and this Thursday, with action items to work with students to establish events as well as funding for Black History Month. And that the coffee and pastries funded by the ASPPCC to complement Welcome Week have received great reception from students and has been a great addition in making students feel comfortable on the campus. And to finish off my report, I'd like to give a big shout out to the PCC Student Life Office and Student Ambassadors for hosting Welcome Week and helping students online through the PCC website live chat. I know there's been many students messaging on the live chat on the PCC, PCC website, so I'm just really thankful for the Student Life Office team and also for assisting on campus. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Harry, and welcome back.
Thank you.
We have.
Natalie Rodriguez and Balau.
Oh, okay.
Balau, you can go now.
Thank you. Good evening. A brief announcement for me as well. Laney ASLC provided free pastries and coffee Monday and Tuesday as well. Very well, warm welcome from the student body. Yesterday, we did a meeting greet. All these events for the next, from the twenty-fourth to the seventy, to the twenty-seventh for Welcome Week were our virtual tonight. We ended before I got in here was our virtual movie night, which we showed two movies. Tomorrow, we'll have Club Rush and Activities Night. And on the twenty-seventh, on Thursday, we will have the Student Success Resources where students are able to learn about campus and community resources for their success from book vouchers, grants, CalFresh, cover California and financial aid. As well, lastly, I would also like to mention that ASLC, at the end of the semester, last, at the end of the semester, last semester, we passed to support the Paralta Gender Inclusion Policy. As well, we reaffirmed our support for the holistic safety and wellness plan. ASLC members and students have urged me to state today that we urge faculty that we cannot ignore the socioeconomic disparities of attaining degrees, and we cannot allow for a situation where students are delayed graduation due to a no-show instructor and a course getting canceled. The trajectory of a student's academic path can drastically change. Education is a right that should not be robbed. I also wanted to mention that I spoke earlier briefly about this with the citizen, and I did state that I do support the people's right to voice their concerns. I will always support that, so will ASLC, but we cannot ignore that the success of students is why we are all here. And that is the conclusion of my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Balau, and welcome back as well. Thank you. Hi, Natalie.
Good evening, Madam President, Chancellor, members of the board. My name is Natalie Rodriguez. I'm the Director of Student Activities and Campus Life at College of Alameda. And I will be providing the report on behalf of the students at College of Alameda tonight. We are, we have begun our regular election cycle. We urge students to get involved in student government and help make their, their time. At College of Alameda, the best experience for themselves as well as for their fellow students. Make your voice count. If you are interested in serving on student government, you may contact me, Director Rodriguez, at nrodriguez@parlaza.edu. We will soon begin circulating our flyers promoting the elections. We urge all students at College of Alameda and at our district colleges to become involved in student government elections. We continue to have our free produce market every second and fourth Tuesday of the month. We encourage everybody to join us. We are there from twelve to two P M. And we are currently still in search of student workers who would like to assist with free produce market and CalFresh outreach again, every second and fourth Tuesday of the month from twelve to two P M. We had a wonderful Welcome Week kickoff. On Monday, Accesso Puente hosted the first virtual event, which was Welcome Week karaoke. We had a little under ten, ten participants. Everyone had a chance to sing, and everybody had a great time. Today, we kicked off our in-person activities, providing free brunch for approximately a hundred and fifty students, faculty, and staff. We had more than nine programs and services, tabling with information and giveaways, and our regular free produce market, as well as local radio personality, Chuy Gomez, as a DJ. Tomorrow, we will continue our Welcome Week celebrations in person with free brunch, tabling, and a limited number of free lunch from Taco Sinaloa for students who complete a Welcome Week punch card. Please pick one up at the Students, Student Activities table. And then Thursday, we will wrap up our Welcome Week activities with a virtual game of Kahoot and Community Mixer. We are excited to welcome everybody back. This concludes my report. Thank you all.
Thank you, Natalie, and welcome back as well. All right, let's go to four point ten, Proalti Classified Senate Report.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have two classified Senate campus reports. The first report comes from the College of Alameda Classified Senate. The College of Alameda Classified Senate met during the College of Alameda Flex Day and provided an update on the district's COVID-nineteen policy and procedure for a safer campus. The Classified Senate provided training workshops during the Flex Day to all classified members on the following topics. The first topic was classified resume development, presented by Ms. Stephanie Bradshaw from Alameda One Stop Career Center at College of Alameda. The second workshop was accounts payable and procurement overview, updates, and review, presented by Mr. Nicholas Shear and Mr. Kamal Idris Solf, and I apologize if I got the name incorrect. And that was from the Finance Department at, over at the district. And last, the third workshop was moving up in your career, presented by Ms. Tracy Hall, Senior Director of Global Talent Management and Global Talent Acquisition Strategy, the McCormick and Company. The second report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. To welcome classified professionals back to a safe, working environment, the Laney College Classified Senate President, Pope Lane, was invited to accompany S C I U and the administration on a walkthrough of the Laney campus on Monday, January thirty-first, from two P M to four P M. On a personal note, I'm happy to be back, and I have faith that the year twenty twenty-two will be better than the year we've just experienced. will be better than the year we've just experienced. That is the end of the Campus Reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Karen. Let's move to 4.11, District Academic Senate Report.
Greetings and Happy New Year to President of the Board, Valeris, Members of the Board, Chancellor Jackson, Members of the Administration, Students, the Faculty, and the Classified Professionals. As we all know, we opened up the campuses yesterday, and I was there at the Laney campus and saw Bright Star helping folks and other people directing folks and all of that kind of stuff. Although there were probably a little blips in terms of where students go and faculty being present and so on, I thought it went very well, and I hope that at the other campuses, they went well. I saw Dr. Jackson visiting Laney campus yesterday, and that went very well. I'm glad she was able to go out there and meet and greet the students, the classified professionals, as well as the faculty who were teaching face-to-face. I think that was very important to do, and I know that today she went to the other campuses. So my hope is that faculty can really, really see that the administration is trying to address the various issues and concerns that we had, but that a lot of people are committed to trying to provide students with a safe but enriching experience. And I think that students having the choices of being online or face-to-face is important, because as we know, there are certain courses that it's always good to provide them with that support. Having said that, I also recognize and appreciate the efforts among faculty, staff, faculty, staff, and students to try to raise up their concerns, their individual concerns regarding safety issues. I think that as we move forward, one of the things that we do have to cite is that since we've been on, been in this COVID, we have had face-to-face classes. And today, we have many, many more of these classes on campus. And what I am proud of is the fact that we have yet to have an outbreak, knock on wood, right? But we have done the things that we're supposed to do. So every time you see a president send out a notice about somebody, it typically isn't somebody who was found to have gotten COVID in a classroom or a faculty person or a classified person or administrator getting COVID in the classroom or in the office. Rather, it's been that they got it at home or somewhere else, and they notified the campus, and the procedures were followed. So my hope is that if everybody is concerned about this, particularly the face-to-face faculty, then taking care of the proper procedures and processes, I think will ensure that your classroom and your individual are not going to be affected by it. We are going to have many other variants of COVID. It's just, that's the way that it's going to be. And so we're going to have to learn how to grapple with it. I believe that the PFT has stated to faculty that they have the right to personally leave up to so many days. And so obviously, if they want to exercise that, they have a right to do so. I hope the administration at each other campuses are ready to provide with substitutes or whatever other ways of addressing it. I think that as we move along, that we need to reinforce and reemphasize safety on all of the campuses. At least these last two days, we've seen some strong efforts going on on the college campuses. So I applaud everybody in terms of trying to do it. Can we do better? Always. And some of the concerns that the faculty have had in terms of N95 or K95, masks being available and so on, I think it's important. I'm assuming that the facilities have all been taken care of. So those issues have not yet cropped up, but we need to see it. And if there's something going on, we need to address it. So I'd like to thank all of the presidents and the staff and administrators and at the various colleges for trying to address and reassure the faculty, staff, and students on the individual campuses. I think students make the choices of whether or not they want to be face-to-face or they want to be online. And later in February, we're going to do a survey among our students by the Office of Research, that we will try to get feedback from students about what their interests are as we go into the summer, fall, and ex-spring to better make sure that we have the correct plans in terms of the way of how many face-to-face and online students we have. So I hope more and more faculty participate and try to make sure that these surveys get completed by students, whether you're in classes online or you're in classes face-to-face. I think it's really important for students to give the feedback necessary for us to do our planning. So we have a lot to do this semester. Look forward to working with the Board of Trustees, working with Chancellor Jackson and the administration. Certainly, the Senate's are worth looking forward to, with the presidents and the administration on the various campuses. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald, for that. Let's move on to 4.12. Do we have public comments? Adam Boerck?
For anybody who is an attendee, if you have any public comment you would like to make, please raise your hand.
Just move over Mark Lipsby, Jennifer Shonowski, and Peter Dehan. There are others, but those three have been promoted to panelists to speak. Peter Dehan, would you like to go first?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Greetings to President and Chancellor Jackson and the Board of Trustees and all the college presidents. The last time I was talking was when Tom Smith was the CFO from the college, from the district, and we know what happened to him. And this time, at that time, I was basically saying, well, where is the budget? But this time is where is the common sense? With the Omicron virus, which is prevalent in our, in our society, I cannot understand why we not stay online for a couple of weeks and wait till the numbers are going down and then open it up to face-to-face. That is my biggest concern. Today, one student could not come to my class because he was COVID positive. And most of my students wanted to start online for the first couple of weeks. That's what I addressed. So today, my class of 19 was only there with three students in my class. So, and the rest I did on Zoom. All right, thank you. That was my talk.
Okay, and Mark Lipsby?
Yes, hi. So the Peralta District decided to return to in-person learning before the Omicron surge. All of its plans happened before the Omicron surge, which has created record levels of transmission, hospitalizations, and it's still averaging over 2,000 deaths per day. And now it refuses, in the midst of the surge, to make any adjustments to protect the lives of our community in the face of this new surge. Meanwhile, we've seen many other colleges and universities throughout California, including Chabot-Las Placitas, temporarily shift many, if not all, courses to remote learning during this surge in order to protect the health and lives of their community and those who are at most at risk. Why are they capable of protecting their communities, but the district here continues to put our community at risk? And who is our Peralta community? Many of our students, staff, and faculty come from communities of color who've been overrepresented with severity of illness, hospitalizations, and deaths during this pandemic. Many of our students are also essential workers, facing the greatest risk of exposure to COVID-19. And many of our students live in multi-generational households and don't want to expose vulnerable family members. And many of us, faculty and staff as well, live with loved ones who are at severe risk from COVID or at risk ourselves. About one in six people in this country are at severe risk. And so the mission statement of Peralta, "We provide our diverse students and communities with equitable access to educational resources." How is it even possible with this current policy? You're telling those with loved ones at severe risk that there's nothing we can do for you, that their lives don't matter. This is a callous and rigid policy that continues to pose undue risk, and you have the ability to put the community first. It's outrageous that you continue to do nothing to adjust for those most at risk at this time. It would be very easy to change your policy immediately for a temporary adjustment to allow for more remote access for those who have at-risk themselves or at-risk family members until the surge numbers can come down, and I urge you to do so. And it's callous for you not to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Shonowski?
Hi, good evening. I just want to mention, I toured all the campuses over the last couple of days, and it was with mixed results, I have to say. At some campuses, I was able to walk around without a mask, never getting checked. I accessed multiple buildings without ever, anyone ever asking me for my clear screen, which I could never actually get to work. And then at other places, it was more successful. I was thrilled to run into the chancellor at Merritt College yesterday and finally get to meet her in person. So that was a highlight. And I don't want to belabor it. I think that there are real problems with the opening and the way that the opening has happened. I know people have worked hard, and the question isn't about hard work. The question is about, we need you all to come and see the campuses. We need you to walk the campuses, not as a board member or a chancellor or as a dean or as a president, but to pretend you're a student and go and walk the campuses and try and experience them for yourself, right? Try to experience the campuses as a place that you go and you work every day, as faculty and staff do. And I think you'll see something very different than the sort of beautiful presentations and the notions that everything's going great. If we want to support our students, we have to really look at things through their lens. And so I encourage you to take the time to do that. I, you will not be surprised, showed up in jeans, a t-shirt, and a ball cap and walked around campus. No one knew who I was or what I was or why I was there. So I would really encourage you all to take the time to do that. I know there are a lot of speakers tonight, so I'll let them speak for themselves. PFT's position is that faculty know best about the modality in which they teach and how to support their students. We have a vested interest in making sure that our students are served, not just today, not just tomorrow, but next year, in five years, in 10 years. So please listen to faculty when they tell you that there are real problems that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move over Karen Goatz and Chris Widenbach. If there are any others who are attendees and registered as attendees who would like to speak for public comment, please raise your hands. Karen Goatz, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, but you can speak now.
Thank you. It's actually Karen Getz, but thank you for trying and doing your best. Good evening, everybody. I heard some and appreciated the earlier comments by the various public servants here in front of us today that are responsible to the citizens of the district and the Peralta Community College. I also heard, I think it's Donald Moore, and forgive me if I missed your name, say that as a representative of Peralta Community Colleges, say that it's important for students to have a choice, and we're happy that students have a choice to attend online or in person. I don't see that reflected in reality. The number of online options is extremely limited. I was just turned down requesting remote access to a class at Berkeley City College. So I don't see the students having a choice. And I'd like one of you to address this when I'm done speaking, please. I would like to also address the fact that community colleges nationwide have seen more than a 20% decline in attendance over the past year or two, which threatens your future, your financial futures, personal as well as Peralta Community College District future. And I think that's something that I don't see any evidence that that is being taken into consideration, because if you, the Peralta Community College District, allows remote access as chosen by your enrolled students, you will increase the number of student body attending and paying into Peralta Community College District coffers. So to me, it's not a rational response to restrict and control the number of students that are allowed online access. I haven't heard anyone here speaking tonight address any problem associated with providing remote access. I haven't heard any reason for choosing not to provide access, and I'd like that addressed tonight by the district. And I would also like to say that there are many students who are unconventional or returning students, meaning they're not in their 20s. And the district has a lot of students in that category, and those are the most vulnerable, some of the most vulnerable students
15 seconds left?
when it comes to Omicron. And so I am requesting remote access for your students this semester. Thank you.
Okay, and Chris Widenbach, please?
Good evening, everyone. I am also speaking tonight in concern about the decision to not revise the earlier decision to be back on campus with so many classes that could very well be taught remotely. For those who aren't aware, there's at least 11 CSUs that not only decided in the first week of January, when their classes started on January 9th, they decided around January 5th to do their first two weeks online wherever possible. And now they've extended that for two more weeks. So they're going through February 6th, which is their, that means their first four weeks. In addition, the Chabot-Las Placitas District, our very close neighbors, announced on January 12th that they were shifting in-person classes to online wherever possible through February 6th. I mention these examples because it shows that a decision like this can be made on the fly. It can be made on very short notice. And as I think two of my colleagues have already mentioned tonight, it is possible to shift into online instructional modalities on a dime now that we've all had a crash course of training in how to teach online. It's way more possible than it used to be. My biggest concern is that the decision to not go part, temporarily remote or online wherever possible was made by a relatively exclusive, small group of people without what I would call the right kind of the right kind of collegial consultants or collaboration between classified professionals, faculty and students. Though all three of those constituencies have leadership bodies that are duly elected. A lot of them do volunteer work. They're not paid for their work. They deserve a lot of respect for the hours they put in and the concern they take for our college communities.
Ten seconds left.
To make a decision without them means that you do not share, you don't let them share the responsibility for the decision. This has been a problem with our district for a while. I think we're moving in a better direction. This is a case where that kind of collaboration needs to happen if you want everyone to buy in and support whatever policy we come up with. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We have Kimberly King and Alex Martinez, who are in as panelists. Kimberly, you can go.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, College Presidents and Faculty Classified and Student Leaders. I'm Kimberly King. I know many of you are faculty person at Laney College in Psychology and Ethnic Studies. And I'm also the co-coordinator of the Umoja Program, a Black Student Success Program at Laney. I'm here today to ask the Board and the Chancellor to please listen to the concerns of numerous faculty, classified staff and students who feel pressured to work on campus during a surge in the Omicron virus and COVID. It's a surge that is causing illness and death in the Bay Area. Most other colleges have postponed going face-to-face or have even pulled back from going face-to-face. Or as Chris mentioned, they've extended their face-to-face. Why hasn't Peralta done that? To what extent was participatory governance utilized in making this decision, as Chris mentioned? That was one thing we were dinged by the ACCJC. I'm not seeing enough movement in terms of getting input from faculty, staff and students into decisions that are made. There's been a petition signed by over 300 Peralta community members. There were meetings before the semester even started with over 200 people in attendance at the two meetings. This really shows a high level of concern. To be clear, we do not want our colleges shut down. We do not want to deprive students of education. We want to offer education to the community. We just want to do it safely. We have the ability to do it safely, just like the CSUs and the UCs. Are our students not as important as those students? Are our faculty and staff not as important as their faculty and staff? It's a human rights issue. Our students are from some of the most vulnerable populations and our classified staff. People who are dying at two and a half times the rate as others. People of color, African-Americans and Latinos. A particular concern to me are the classified staff and part-time instructors and students who I don't feel have as much a say as us full-time faculty. As Jennifer, as other people mentioned, I have a union that has, I have rights where I can take leave and things to protect myself. Classified staff can't do that. I'm getting people saying things to me, "Help" and things like that. I feel very concerned for them. I felt there being, many of them feel they're being forced to work and be in unsafe situations. I'm only doing, I don't even have to, this is not for me. I am teaching online. I just wanted to say finally, I hope that the Chancellor can respect the Constitution of the United States and realize I have free speech, the right to assembly, and I should not be accused of doing something wrong for practicing my constitutional rights. Thank you.
Okay, Alex Martinez.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. I heard earlier when I joined that our students have a choice on whether or not to attend remotely or in person. This is just ultimately not true, as I am a student pursuing my studio arts degree for transfer. And literally, all the classes under my degree, except for art history, is only being offered in-person or as a hybrid class, needing us students to come into class. My first class I attended yesterday evening that is supposed to be in-person, my teacher gave us the option to attend remotely. And I kid you not, 75% of the class that is enrolled attended the Zoom meeting. I already have to go to work during Monday through Friday so I can attend these classes, so I can make my rent and pay for schooling. Last week, my work had to close due to an outbreak. If that happened this week, I would have to miss all the classes I paid for, as you cannot go anywhere if you have COVID or if you have been exposed. And I've seen during this pandemic that most people will lie so they can go places. I've had friends tell me that they have COVID, but they still went to the grocery store. They still went and got food, and they still exposed other people for their own selfish reasons. Most people, as they do, oops, sorry. And most of these people, you know, they got let in, because if you don't have any visible symptoms, there's no reason for someone to stop you from going anywhere. I have not had any choice this semester, even though I have emailed, even though I have asked, even though I am a student that you say is supposed to have a choice in this matter. I'm being forced to come to classes that I want to be online. So if I catch COVID and I'm going to classes, ultimately it's on you, but I'm the one who will have to deal with the consequences. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I'm now going to promote to panelist Lon Nguyen, Ada Clark and Allison Sigmund. Okay, Lon, you can go, go now. Are you there, Lon? Okay, let's move to Ada Clark. Oh, sorry.
I thought that you were gonna unmute me, so-
There you go.
That's fine, sorry. So we're gonna start over, because we're talking without looking at it. Good evening, Board of Trustees, the Chancellors and the communities. My name is Lon Nguyen. I am the Financial Officer at Berkeley City College. I have been at Peralta for over 20 years. I'm here today to avoid the concern about the safety of community regarding the return in person during this, you know, Omicron surge. For the sake of everyone's safety, and especially for those who are most at risk, as we all know, we, the staff, faculty and the students, should have the option to work remotely during this surge and just so the student in person with the common sense of distancing. Instead, we were told to come back 100% staff in my office. Since the last two weeks, there's no rotation scheduling play. All eight of us in a small office, no window, you know, masks on all day long. We don't have a flashy class at the front counter. Some of the staff members regularly have headaches, they have breathing issue due to wear masks all day. I'm sure that we, some of us have experienced that. In my opinion, this is occurred because of poor planning and lack of collaboration between management. Me and my colleague have been a trespass issue to the manager and we were still in silence, you know, trying to silence it, no our concern. What if one of our college that's gonna get sick, right, we all in the office, if one of us gets sick, everyone could be impacted. Who gonna serve our student? Have we ever thought about that? I am a mother of four daughters, so I do need to protect my kids as well. I have been, you know, we have been successfully serve student in the last two years, almost two years remotely. And so, you know, it's not hurt to delay the service in a few more weeks until the COVID cases subside. And it, it would be increased our safety and a peace of mind for most of us. At the minimum, I would, I would think, at least to provide approved flexibility of organizing the department, allow us to rotation schedule based on the actual student that we serve and needs on campus. I say all this because I care. We want to keep Peralta and our community safe. So please, for the health and safety of our community, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Lon. We're gonna go to Ada Clark now. Ada, are you there? Okay, let's go to Allison Sigmund.
I thank you so much for having me. I am a student at Peralta Colleges. I am here to voice my concern that I do believe that the school, the school should continue to be completely online as well as for the faculty. I myself am a mother and I have a small child and I'm very concerned for her safety. My mom also, who I see frequently, has autoimmune problems and is a kidney transplant recipient. So she is someone that I really need to protect. And exposing students every day to in-person classes is super dangerous and it's gonna continue to surge. Like I said before, there's, many colleges have been flexible and are able to offer online, online courses for everyone. And I too had some challenges finding online courses when I was enrolling for the semester. So again, just, just continuing on with the sentiments that have been said, thanks again for letting me speak.
I'm here. Ada is here.
Okay, go ahead, Ada.
Hi, to the Board Members, the Chancellor and all the Peralta Communities. My name is Ada Clark and I'm, I work at the Financial Aid Office at Berkeley City College. I'm here today to voice my opinion about the decision of people, you know, we have to come, return back to work. We all in one office, as Lon has said, we all in one office, we less than six feet apart. And we just, we, we there. And I work at the front counter of the Financial Aid Office. The student, I'm the first one the students get to. I don't know who decision it was and what decision was made to not have a plexiglass. I go to the banks, I go to the grocery stores, everybody has done this. But, well, I guess Berkeley City College, because I hear that even Merritt have some and even Alameda have plexiglass. Why am I not protected? I don't know. Since the surge of the Omicron virus has come out, I don't know why we have to go back to work and we going back to work, all of us at one time, just like Lon said. If we all get sick at one time, what are, we all exposed, what are we gonna do? I love my job. I've been there and I'm there because I love my job, not because of how much pay I'm getting. Everybody know I get the lowest pay it is, but I'm there because I love it. I like helping students. And I would like for them to at least consider, you know, letting us go back remotely or even letting us go back, not all at one time. You got 100, we in the office, 100%, our office is so small. And I guess the people making the decision, they have their office, they can go in, close the door, take off the mask and do whatever they want to do. But we, all day long, eight hours a day, got to have on this mask. I'm even scared when I pull off my mask to eat, because we so close together. So, you know, it's just, you need to take consideration of us, because we are the ones. If you, if you don't do us right, then we can't do students right. And we need the students. If we don't have the students, who gonna have a job? Okay, that's my concern. I'm finished.
Thank you, Ada. I'm gonna move over Carolyn Muff and Fasha Far. Sorry if I butchered your names. And Carolyn Muff, you can go now. Carolyn, are you there? Okay, Fasha Far.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Okay, I'm Carolyn Muth. I'm a student at Berkeley City College. Thank you for this, this meeting where we can talk about our concerns. I think this is an equity issue. I cannot, I have an autoimmune disorder and and I, I'm, I'm one person, but I know everywhere in the, in the college, there are many cases. And I think we need, Peralta, the Peralta Colleges should be more cognizant of, of actually having more online courses. This semester, I am enrolled in one online course because the poetry class that I wanted to take was not online. And I'm not sure if I can take a class that's not online. So thank you for considering, reconsidering not having more protection from, from the COVID pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Fasha, are you there?
Fashafar, yes, I am.
Fashafar, sorry about that. Go ahead.
No problem. Good evening to the Board Trustees, the College Presidents, the Chancellor, Staff, Faculty and Staff. My name is Fashafar and I work in Merritt College in the Financial Aid Office. I have some concerns about my well-being as well as staff, faculty and students. My concerns are with the poor working condition that Peralta District expects their employees to work under after a pandemic that killed millions and the variants that continue to rob us of our health and families to return after two years in a working environment that's not sanitized correctly, dusty counters, cold offices. The PPE you have given some colleges, such as the flimsy counter, plexiglass that's cheaply installed and the face mask, the N95, only to employees and not students. What sense does that make, that Peralta's employees who work closely with students be subjected to work under these unclean, dusty, unsanitized offices, assist students? Where's the COVID-19 funds that provide PPE and N95 masks for everyone who enters the campus buildings to install properly thicker plexiglass at every campus? So we will be protected from this killer virus? And a cleaning service that really does the work in making sure our campuses are clean for students, faculty, parents, staff and for our community? I'll leave with this. In the past and presently, I have to fight for my job. Now I got to fight my job for my health rights to be in a clean and healthy environment. Thank you for listening. And please take in consideration our health. And we have to enter these campuses is at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Fashafar. It doesn't look like we have any other hands raised. Oh, there's one. Lon Nguyen already spoke. Let me see if somebody, there's several Lon Nguyen's. Let me see if she, somebody else registered under her name. One second. Hi, I moved over who, one of the Lon Nguyen's who have registered. Is this someone new?
Oh, sorry. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Dear Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, Chancellor Jackson and the Peralta Community. My name is Tammy Perry. I work in the Financial Aid Office at Berkeley City- Office at Berkeley City College. I am here today to voice my concern about the safety of our community regarding to return in-person services during this Omicron surge. I'm a mother and I have been receiving many messages from OUSD about COVID cases happening daily in my kids' schools. Many schools have shut down, including my kids' schools as well. Peralta is a community college district and we are at higher risk to the community based on who we search. I can't comprehend that why Peralta is not giving staff, faculty and students an option of working remotely at this time in the middle of a surge like many other schools in the Bay Area are already doing. It is too risky to extend in-person service at the time. Omicron is very serious and contagious. Many of my family have been sick, so I'm scared and certainly don't wanna bring it home to my family. I hope that Peralta will revisit the decision to return in-person services at this time and have a better plan to protect the community and put our safety at risk. Thank you so much. And that's all.
Thank you, Tammy. Um, it looks like that is that we have no other hands raised for public comment at this time.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, let's move on to, thank you all, first of all, for taking the time to communicate your um, your thoughts and your sentiments uh, to us. Thank you. Let's go to 4.13, 413 Chancellor's Report.
Um, good evening, um, Board President, as well as the other board members and colleagues. Um, as I always do, I'd like the presidents to give their reports first. And then I'm asking that the Executive Director of MCPR, Mark Johnson, provide just a brief update to the board. And I'd like to, to start with, um, that's the College of Alameda, uh, followed by Merritt College, uh, Laney College, and then last BCC. So I will start first with College of Alameda, Dr. Nathaniel Jones III.
And as always, please let me know if you guys would like me to share your college reports.
Thank you, Maya. I can, I don't need that this time, but thank you. Good evening, President Reese, Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues and community members. First, I'd like to express my heartfelt gratitude to Chancellor Jackson for visiting the College of Alameda this morning, as well as many um, COA community members that came out and helped to make this visit an enjoyable and productive one. I would also like to convey how wonderful it was to see many students, faculty and staff on campus today participating in our Welcome Day event, events, which included um, our fresh produce distribution, um, a brunch, as Director Rodriguez mentioned, as well as information sessions and tables. As part of our strategic enrollment management efforts, we have officially launched our new student-centric website on January the 4th. Along with the new website design, the college has changed its URL to be alameda.edu. New attributes of our website include um, mobility responsiveness, intuitive and student-centric navigation, and a design that is around the College of Alameda's guided pathways, fields of study, as well as a full-service chat feature. I would like to thank the Website Redesign Committee for their great work. I would also like to welcome two new colleagues to the College of Alameda. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Augustine Gill as our new Vice President for Administrative Services. Augustine is a seasoned professional with over twenty years of administrative and management experience. He grew up in Pakistan and came to the United States to for graduate studies in international development administration. Augustine has managed a multimillion-dollar global and US-based programs in education, health, poverty alleviation, and disaster management for some of the most reputable organizations, including Save the Children, American Red Cross, and the Catholic Charities. For the past ten years, Augustine has worked with nonprofit boards and led um, local um, nonprofit um, organizations as Chief Executive Officer and Chief Operating Officer in the um, Bay Area. Please join me in welcoming um, Mr. Augustine Gill to College of Alameda and the Peralta District. I would also like to welcome Dr. Riza Malaysia as our new Interim Dean of COA for um, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Division, or STEM as we call it for short, which you approved this evening. Dr. Malaysia brings to this position significant experience because of his role as a tenured faculty teaching biology for over nineteen years with the college. He's served on many shared governance committee, including the Budget Committee, Distance Education Curriculum Committee, and others, as well as serving as an academic senator. He has extensive academic and professional background in STEM, as well as a focus on innovative practices with his, which will be a great asset to the division as well as to the college. Last Friday, we had our Spring uh, 22 Flex Day. The day included um, presentations and welcome by college leaders. Um, also sessions on humanizing your course with a liquid syllabus, student learning outcomes assessment and program review, embedded librarians and option for your Canvas course, and a conversation about ethnic studies and equity. Lastly, in recognition of um, Dr. Martin Luther King Day that we celebrated last week, uh, I'd like to end with um, two quotes from Dr. King that I included in my flex presentation that I believe speak to the work that we do as educators, um, as well as in light of um, the current challenges that we um, that we find ourselves in. First quote, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the true goal of education." As part of a college community, we are engaged in transformative and noble work. It is highly important and it is what drives us to do the things that we do with a high degree of compassion, thoughtfulness, and seriousness. Hence, but we also know that the work is not always easy. Hence, if we can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But by all means, keep moving. And that's the clarin call for us to do. Despite the challenges, I believe that we're called to continue to keep moving to advance the work of transforming lives through education. That ends my report. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for that, uh, President Jones. That was really inspiring. Um, so Chancellor Jackson, President Napoli Bella Reese, Trustees, Peralta constituents and community members, want to say good evening. Uh, let me begin by saying that I appreciate everyone who has demonstrated a genuine commitment to heading into the Spring 22 Academic Term with a renewed sense of uh, hope and purpose outside. We're all well aware of the challenges that we continue to face. Uh, so please know that your dedication, your circumspection, and your sacrifice that you bring to bear on behalf of our students, on behalf of each other, uh, that does not go unnoticed. Uh, but with that said, I want to start by sharing with you some of the positive and exciting things that have transpired, transpired uh, here at Merritt over the past few weeks. So just a couple highlights. Uh, just before the break started, I want to um, highlight Ms. Tahida Anderson, who serves as the Project Manager for Merritt Colleges Umoja Sankofa Program. Uh, she took the opportunity to connect with uh, the faculty, students and staff down the hill at Castlemont High School in East Oakland. And during her visit, in addition to distributing uh, PPE, we had some Merritt swag bags she was giving away and uh, and her apprising every one of the resources and support that are available to students who participate in Sankofa, which is the counseling, the book vouchers, the financial uh, support, et cetera. Uh, she addressed questions that the students had about many of our academic programs. And based upon their feedback, uh, we learned, up that dark room. Based on our feedback, uh, we learned that the students seemed to be most interested in our allied health programs, particularly the EMT, the Rad Tech, and the nursing. But was, what was really thing most exciting for us was that we were able to get a commitment from the Castlemont uh, coaches that they would be constituting a dual-enrolled student-athlete uh, cohort uh, to, to pursue a pathway in health sciences, and that's gonna start next semester. So we really excited about that. I'm also pleased to share with you that Merritt College was one of four institutions nationwide that was credited with contributing to a report, which was published by the Ronald, I wanna get this right, the Ronald W. Walters Leadership and Public Policy Center at Howard University, titled "Engaging College Students in the 21st Century Law Enforcement", and funded by the United States Department of Justice of Community-Oriented Policing Services. A mouthful. Uh, the report identified best strategies for incorporating diversity, equity and inclusion approaches to uh, really try to transform recruitment policies uh, for law enforcement agencies. And given the reputation, the reputation of our Administration of Justice Program at Merritt and the, the reach of our faculty, uh, particularly that of our recently retired Department Chair, uh, Ms. Dixon, Ms. Margaret Dixon, Merritt College was asked to convene a student focus group uh, to talk about student perceptions of policing, uh, police, uh, Black-Brown community relationships, and law enforcement careers. So the final report ended up detailing uh, the focus group findings and summarizing student suggestions for both mending and, and strengthening police-community relations and how we could go about recruiting young people, but particularly uh, students of color to professions in law enforcement. And Merritt's contributions to this effort was summed up by the Director in this way, and I quote, "Without the participata- without the participation of the focus group volunteers from Merritt College, we would not have been able to conduct this critical study." So we were happy to lean in and lend a hand. So in closing, I want to give a warm welcome to some of the folks who are new to Merritt College or, or new to their positions. So just a few names, just wanna give some love uh, to Ms. Maria Valencia, who is uh, an A&R clerk here at Merritt. Uh, Ms. Stephanie Lee, who is our new Financial Aid Specialist. Uh, we have Joan Pinkney, who is in the business office, uh, Thing Kim, our new custodian, Stephanie DeVito, uh, beloved, but she has a new role as our Health Science Health Services Coordinator, and Kevin Subakow, who is our new tenure-track chemistry instructor. So we look forward to you doing amazing things at Merritt College and for this district. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thanks and great job as always, President Johnson. Um, good evening, Chancellor Jackson, uh, President Napoli Bella Reese, members of the Governing Board, students, partners in education, and valued community members. This week at Laney College has certainly seen a, a lot of activity on campus and has certainly been great to see so many people come back. My special thanks go to the faculty, the staff, the administrators for their efforts, uh, not only this week as we start, but the buildup to really have us not just ready, not just in line, but ready for the semester. And as we continue along though, we continue to listen and we continue to adjust where needed to meet the needs of our students and our employees. Most importantly, I would like to acknowledge the collaboration that has taken place between the Laney College staff, Bright Star Nursing Services, and Marina Security to make this week go as smoothly as possible. And a special thanks to District Director of Public Safety Timothy Thomas, who in the face of some feedback, uh, provided us with some more um, presence with Marina Security to help guide people around campus. And thank you to our constituents who provided that bit of feedback that, that, that caused us to go ahead and make that tweak. Also, um, members of the board in my written report tonight, I also have an acknowledgement for all who made our uh, Laney College Flex Day a success. Uh, I often say that I look forward to those Fridays because I really feel like I don't go anywhere, but at the same time, I, I go to a great one-day conference that, that uh, really you can't get anywhere else. Laney College got a real shot in the arm with its food distribution efforts last week. We were awarded a $44,600 grant from the Alameda County Community Food Bank. These funds will be used for long-term investments in addressing food insecurities among our students. My most sincere thanks to Food Services Manager Neil Brumanco and all the colleagues who contributed to writing and ultimately successfully achieving this successful grant. I'd also like to take this opportunity as always to recognize students who are successful. Peralta's Citizen Editor-in-Chief Letitia Luna, Luna, excuse me, uh, was one of the few applicants uh, selected for a coveted paid summer internship position at the San Francisco Chronicle. As she engages in multiple, multi- or in multimedia projects and community engagements, assignments as part of this internship, it will certainly be an accomplishment for which our college shares a great deal of pride. Also pride in um, her professor, Lani Gastis. At the next meeting, uh, there will be further uh, details about this exciting development in my written report. Tonight, I'd like to close with my last item, which is to talk about something great that has happened over the last two Saturdays at Laney College. One-Stop Saturday has become a tradition that continues at Laney during the two Saturdays that precede the semester. On the fifteenth, we had about a hundred students uh, join our virtual event. And then this past Saturday, we had over two hundred, yes, over two hundred students join us in person. And from that, there were more than two hundred and fifty student registrations that happened immediately within the window that followed that event. It was great to be there and see students, seeing counselors and receiving so much needed in-person assistance. My special thanks to Ms. Hope Lane and Katrina Santos, as well as the members of the One-Stop Work Group who put in hours of work and coordinated efforts across our campus. You know, it was, it was really great to see the students come and, and really get that first engagement with Bright Star to, to get onto campus and get access. And then to have students, um, in addition to receiving uh, assistance, receive a Laney swag bag, um, of, a folder for the semester, pens, and then also be treated to breakfast, uh, water and coffee. Additionally, we had a number of tables set up the event with representatives from Union Bank and Sparkpoint, along with Laney's Career Services, as well as our Restoring Our Communities program, all of whom set up tables. And then our All-Star faculty, uh, inclu- uh, including Chris Widenbach, who was out there saying hello to students and welcoming them, as well as our deans and other faculty were on hand answering questions about programs and classes. Additionally, um, there was just so much coordination and collaboration that took place that day to make things a success. But having said that, I want to just uh, close my report tonight by providing a moment of additional recognition. The event was from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. But several of our colleagues stayed well afterward, uh, basically until four, to continue assisting the many students in need of enrollment services. And with that, I would like to acknowledge the following individuals especially for staying all the way until four o'clock to guide students within Dean Mildred, Mildred Lewis's area. Charles Bradford, uh, Jennifer Ma, William Ramos Ochoa, Blanca Montes de Oca, Atiya Rashada, Tina Towor, and also our student ambassadors who provided a num- not just the student experience, but in a lot of cases, some translation services that were badly needed. Lisa Wong, Carlos Jordan Silva, who is a regular attendee at these, Sajida Sawari, and UMS Taylor. Really, this was, you know, education at Peralta- Really, this was, you know, education at Peralta is about personal attention. And this really, this Saturday was just such a moment in which I felt like I learned from many people who committed and did such great hard work for us. And as we move through the semester, and we look at our more than 70 sections that will be opening either on February 14th or on March 21st, we are going to pledge to offer that same amount of, before the first day of class, personal attention for those students. Indeed, at Laney and across Peralta, we do great things when we come together. And this past Saturday was yet another reminder. This concludes my report.
Thank you, President Besikov. Good evening, President Napolea Bellarys, Chancellor Jackson, members of the Board of Trustees, colleagues, and community members. Feliz Ano Nuevo, Happy New Year. In addition to the written report for Berkeley City College, I'd like to offer some remarks. It is with great enthusiasm that I would like to welcome students, faculty, classified professionals, and administrators to the new year and spring semester. Berkeley City College is offering 430 sections, 26% of which are in person, 13% hybrid, and 61% online. With just over 1,700 students enrolled in face-to-face classes, the campus has been active and ready to serve students. Like many of our new students, this is my first semester with this level of on-campus engagement since joining the Peralta family. I've enjoyed meeting colleagues in person, students throughout, and making connections. And one such connection was with Senita, who came to BCC to enroll in classes this week. Dr. Stacy Shears met her in a grocery store and did what most educators do when the topic of education comes up. She asked Senita what her dreams and goals were. This conversation led to Senita coming to campus and receiving services from enrollment services, professionals, counseling faculty, and where she learned about opportunities for campus employment. Today, Counseling Faculty member Skylar Barton was walking a new student, Ibrahim, around campus because he had arrived early for his first in-person class. So meeting Senita, Ibrahim, and all the students with whom I've been able to connect have been the highlights of my week. And it's only Tuesday. The BCC student ambassadors have been actively engaged to support students and the broader community during these first weeks of classes. And I've had the privilege of working with them last week when we were in final preparations for the start of classes this semester. They provide real-time support in our live chat feature on the website, as well as now in person in the Welcome Center counter. And in collaboration with our Student Services colleagues who support the express registration events, they have guided hundreds of students over the past weeks through the enrollment process and eventually to registering classes. With all of the energy that we also had going on last week with our College Flex Day, as you have heard from some of the other college presidents, it was well-attended and included much-needed space to reengage as a teaching and learning community. From guided pathways implementation to strategic planning to addressing the operational needs for the spring semester, BCC faculty, classified professionals, and administrators engaged in deep work to continue to support student success, student completion, and remain focused on issues of equity. Of course, we had a community-building activity that might have yielded some video clips of BCC colleagues singing, and I'll leave it to you to find those. I am grateful to the leadership of Susan Khan, Alan Olmedo, and in their collaboration with our Professional Development Committee and District colleague Inger Stark for our very successful Flex Day. I would like to thank colleagues from across Berkeley City College and the district for the work to prepare for our campus and to welcome the over 1,700 students who have enrolled in face-to-face classes, and for the thousands more enrolled in online courses. From our custodial team to the security team, to the leadership team, faculty, classified professionals, it really has taken each and every one of us to continue to keep students at the center of our actions and work moving forward. The list is incredibly long to name every person, but please know that we see you and how you are showing up for our students, both in person and online. In closing, I just want to say that we are looking forward to welcoming Dr. Jackson tomorrow. And while we are excited to have you on campus, Dr. Jackson, I have to say that I am even more excited to see the students that will come to our campus and get the services that they need, both in person and online. So with that, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Mark, would you like to just share a few things, district-wide emphasis that you and I discuss?
After I unmute myself, I would be delighted to.
Okay, all right.
So bear with me here, this is a preview of a Peralta Gems article.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Are you with me?
Yes.
So this is a Peralta Gems article that has not yet been written, but I had the pleasure of accompanying Chancellor Jackson on a couple of her campus visits. So here are just a couple of pictures from the visit to Merritt College. My apologies to President Besikov, I wasn't there for the visit to Laney, although I was on campus today, and it was hopping. So going through, it was great to see those signs that were directing students to the check-in points. President Shonowski mentioned seeing Chancellor Jackson and being able to meet in person, so I was able to get that captured on film. Here is our Director of Public Safety, Tim Thomas, who is helping to keep us safe as we navigate through the Merritt College Parking Lot B. And here's President Johnson and Chancellor Jackson at Merritt College. And this morning, we went to College of Alameda, where Dr. Jay was able to see old acquaintances, including Selwyn. And she got a Puente t-shirt, which is very stylish, to connect with her former colleague Dominique Benavides and President Jones. And we got to visit the Welcome Center, where there was literally greeting of babies that happened, and then took a tour of the fabulous new College of Alameda Arts Building. And we're able to see all of the booths that were set up at College of Alameda to welcome the students back and provide the students with those Puente t-shirts and some really awesome Umoja t-shirts as well. So with that, that's the pictures. I'm looking forward to the visit with Berkeley City College tomorrow for more pictures there. And the other thing that Chancellor Jackson asked me to speak about tonight was about our new website. And let me see if I could find my Zoom control so I can try and share screen again. There we go. So I have an update for you on the website. Can you see my slides again? Great.
Yes, but it's not in presentation mode, but yes.
Okay. So just a quick update, when I last spoke to you about the website, I gave you a little bit of a background. So we've been working on this project for about a year and a half at this point to relaunch the website for attracting new students, to make it more accessible, to make it mobile-optimized, and to integrate better with our marketing system. It's been an incredibly collaborative process where I've had the privilege of communicating about the website with many of our students, including ASBCC President Harry Mapadil, who was on the call earlier, keeping up with faculty and staff through different collaborative governance committees, and keeping up with our classified professional colleagues as well. Here's a sort of a before and after. The website hasn't changed in a decade, and we are just about ready to make that change to the beautiful new website on the right, which was based on a mock-up created by in-house graphic designer Marcus Creel. In-house web content developer Aaron Harbor has been incredibly busy. He's built out well over 300 pages from the current district website that he's converted into the HubSpot Content Management site. And we were very, very pleased to announce a soft launch of the new site at explore.peralta.edu on November 15th. We spent December and January so far dealing with the feedback that we got. And I want to say thank you to all of the members of the community who have been emailing myself and Aaron Harbor, our web content developer, with suggestions on the new website. And we definitely appreciate the praise. Many people are telling us that it's a beautiful new website, it is responsive, looks great on mobile devices as well as on desktop. It's much better in terms of accessibility. So we appreciate the praise, but what we're really looking for are the problems with the site so that we can fix those problems before we do our full launch. And our plan is to do the launch in mid-February, we're targeting February 15th as the day to do the launch. So what does the launch mean? It means that we will change, right now, if you type in www.peralta.edu, you are directed to web.peralta.edu. On February 15th, we are going to change our DNS settings so that www.peralta.edu directs one to our new website. In other words, we're changing the domain from explore.peralta.edu to www.peralta.edu. The old site is still going to be available if you type in web.peralta.edu, but if you just do peralta.edu, people will end up on the new site. We'll be decommissioning the old site much later in 2022. We want to make sure that all of the information has been adequately archived and that all of the updates, the URL updates have been made so that people can navigate easily to the new website. So that's what our next steps after we launch will be. It'll be making sure that all of the links resolve properly, building out the HubSpot database for the employee directory, and some of the other tools like the calendar of events that I'll show you in just a second. Translated content, which we discussed the last time I presented about the website. A chatbot, I wanted to thank Royal Roberts for the information about some chatbot organizations. We've had discussions with them, and we're exploring some other options as well. And then any other suggestions that you all would want to have. And with that, I'm going to click in. Or actually, I'll just go to our new website. And I'll show you that it is very beautiful on a mobile-sized monitor, a nice responsive design, whether one is looking at it at a mobile device. The aspect ratio. We've got it integrated with our newsletter with Peralta Gems. As you can see, we've already got the president's reports from tonight that are posted on Peralta Gems, and that's being pulled into the new site. We also want to make the new website your one spot for events that are happening across the district. And as events happen at the colleges, we'll be adding those events here on the district site as well. And we have more information about the colleges and the footer with help with navigation. This is also really important for accessibility standards. And the last thing I'll point out is that our web content developer, Aaron Harbor's email address is on every page. So if you have any questions or concerns about the content, you can email Aaron so that we can get this fixed for you. And with that, I'll stop sharing, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Presidents, and also thank you, Mark. I just want to make one last comment before I turn it back over to President Reese. And everybody has been making quotes tonight. And rather than trying to address a lot of the questions and concerns that were voiced during the public comment, I would want to direct people to the Safe Peralta website. If you have not looked at the Town Hall that we had in December on the 20th, or the Town Hall or Flex Day, please do so. A lot of the questions that were voiced have been addressed in the questions and answers, as well as some of the comments by some of the presenters on the panel. So the esteemed author James Baldwin once said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it's faced." And so for those that have concerns, thank you for voicing those. Like I said, some of those have already been addressed, but we have to face things and address them. And so with that, that's what I'd like to leave you with. Nothing can be changed until it is faced. So thank you very much, Board. Thank you, President Reese, and I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you all that presented. Trustees, do we have any questions at all? Vice President Delphine Pope?
Yes, thank you, Mark, for showing us the website. Can you let us know about any sort of translation services that's going to be available for the websites?
Yes, indeed. So we are working on the translation functionality. HubSpot, the vendor that we use for the content management system, has given us some recommendations. And that's absolutely at the top of our list. Once we get the English content aligned, then we will be providing some translations. And we're looking at Spanish language, Chinese language, other languages that are used in our district.
Thanks for the reminder, Trustee Delphine Pope.
You know, I'm always going to ask, Chancellor.
And keep us, you know, hold us to it, that we wanted to move to this platform so we would have some accessibility issues and also translation, so it is definitely on the radar.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Thank you, Chancellor, and your staff for the reports. I also really was very appreciative of public comment. And I just, I hope we have some mechanism to validate in a more systematic way the district's needs around COVID. It's obvious you're working really hard with your staff to try to accommodate needs. It's not obvious what the correct choice is in any given instance. It's really clear there's a diversity of viewpoints. I really appreciate the difficulty of the decisions. And we need a more methodical way of figuring out what those needs specifically are. And so I trust that you and your staff and faculty and students will collectively figure that out. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez, you in? Any other comments? None. All right, let us go on to our presentations. We are at 5.1. As you all know, we are going through a redistricting process that's happening across many different governance bodies. And so, can you hear me? Okay. And so now we have our presenters from Bear Demographics and Research. I will hand over the mic to you all. Welcome.
Thank you, President Napolea Bellarys and trustees. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening. My name, excuse me, my name is Andrew Westall. I am the principal and owner of Bear Demographics and Research, and we are your consultants for the district's redistricting process. Tonight, what we'll do is we'll go through a presentation covering the redistricting process criteria and the schedule that we have laid out for you. You may well be aware that the district needs to be completed with this process by February 28th of this year. So we're going to be spending a lot of time together over the next 30 or some odd days. So with that, I'll bring up the presentation, and we'll get started here. So with that said, tonight, what we're going to cover is really the summary of the redistricting law criteria and process and the Board of Trustees' process that'll take place over the next month or so. In terms of redistricting laws, there's a variety of laws that cover and govern the redistricting process that the Peralta Community College District will go through. These include the U.S. Constitution, the Federal Voting Rights Act, California Elections Code, the California Constitution. These include the U.S. Constitution, the Federal Voting Rights Act, California Elections Code, California Constitution. And as you can imagine, redistricting can be a very litigious process. So there's a lot of case law in this area as well that helps define the contours of what we can and can't do. So first up, we have the, what's called the equal population principle. And the real main reason why we do redistricting is because after every ten years, when the U.S. Census data comes out after the census is taken, jurisdictions like the Peralta Community College District need to adjust those districts so that they're substantially equal in population. And so this is really the main premise for why redistricting takes place. And kind of the overarching goal is to equalize population. While there's a lot of other goals that are in the law, this is the primary one that we deal with. And as you can see, it's contained not only in the U.S. Constitution, but also in the Elections Code as well and a variety of case law. When we deal with equal population, we want to make a good faith effort to draw districts with equal population. But it's important to understand that local jurisdictions are not required to have exact equality when it comes to equal population. And we'll spend a little time talking about how this works. But in general, when you're redrawing congressional districts like the State Commission just completed last month, when in congressional districts, congressional districts have to be within one person of each other. And so if you can imagine that a congressional district had seven hundred thousand people, every district in the state of California is either going to have seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand and one, or six hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. When it comes to local jurisdictions, whether it's the state legislature, cities, counties, special districts, school districts, and community college districts, you have some flexibility when it comes to that equal population principle. And in general, that what we call the overall deviation, if it's less than ten percent, it's presumptively valid under the law. And we'll go through a brief example of how this works. But a deviation has to be explained for legitimate reasons and it should be explained under traditional redistricting criteria that we'll also get into. And as you can see at the bottom of the page, once again, there's a lot of case law on this issue. So as we were saying before, deviations from equal populations should be justified. We don't want to seek to disadvantage any particular group that lives within the district and we want to be able to show a good faith effort. So in terms of calculating a deviation and looking at population equality, first thing that you start with was the district's total population. And after the 2020 census, as adjusted by the state of California, the population of the district was six hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-seven. So from there, what we want to do is we want to divide that by seven, by the seven trustees to determine the equal, ideal equal population of a district, which is ninety-eight thousand three hundred and four. And then from there, you determine the percent deviation from idea, from the ideal of each district. Basically, what is the percentage that the district is above or below that ideal number? And then in order to determine the total percent deviation, you take the district with the highest population and its deviation and the district with the lowest population and its deviation, and you add those together, and that's what needs to be less than ten percent. And so here we have a brief example. This is not based on the Peralta Community College District, but it's an example that's close to that. And so if you have an example of a district with a population of seven hundred thousand people in seven trustee areas, as you can see, the ideal population of the, of the seven areas is actually wrong. I just noticed that. Should be a hundred thousand. But, you know, in general, if you're looking at this example, what you're really talking about is an ideal population of four hundred and ninety thousand for the district. And so you have seventy thousand in each district. And then based on that, you have this percentage of deviation. So as you can see in District One, it's under by about twenty-eight hundred, which is a deviation of negative four percent. And you can see in District Six here is over by seventeen hundred and fifty people, and so that's a deviation of positive two point five percent. So when you add these two numbers together, once again, the total percent deviation in this example is six point five percent. And so once again, this is the number that we need to get under ten percent. And as we get into the district's demographics, you'll see we'll have some work to do. So with that, after we get done with equal population, we really want to focus on what's called the traditional redistricting criteria. And that really deals with four issues: contiguity, compactness, natural boundaries of streets, and neighborhood and communities of interest. Contiguity is the idea that all parts of the district should connect. So as we go through the process of redrawing the boundaries of the trustee areas, we want to make sure that you can go from any part of one district to another part of that district without having to leave the district. And so contiguity is one of the more important requirements in redistricting. And because the entire district is contiguous, you know, we want to make sure that we adhere to that criteria. Districts should also be geographically compact. And compactness is a, what I'll say, not necessarily an optional criteria, but it is a subjective criteria. There are many ways to measure compactness, and it's important to be aware of appearance, shape, and borderlines. But as we go through this process, you know, whether it's the city boundaries of the various cities that are in the district from Albany down to Oakland, or whether it's the neighborhoods within the city of Oakland or the neighborhoods in some of the other cities like Berkeley that split between trustee areas, we want to make sure that as we understand those contours of those lines, they may not necessarily be the most compact, but we are using or looking at existing boundaries. And so we also want to observe existing boundaries, things like geographic and topographic boundaries, streets and freeways, and we have a variety of freeways and major boulevards that go throughout the district, and then other boundaries that the board may want to consider. In terms of neighborhoods and communities of interest, the idea here is that we want to preserve communities sharing common interests. And the real reason, main reason why we do outreach and we get information and solicit public input in this process is because we want to understand from the public how they define their own neighborhoods and their own cities. And so neighborhoods and cities could share common interests. There's also common interests like land use patterns, whether it's single-family residential housing or multifamily housing, industrial, commercial land use patterns, things like cultural and language characteristics. Income level could also be a common interest, educational background, employment and economic patterns, and as well as things like crime, school attendance, boundaries, and other common issues. As you can see in the demographic profile that we provided to the district, we have a variety of other data other than just the census data that's available to you that covers some of these areas. And so once again, we want to obtain public testimony and consider the census data, the city neighborhood information, and any other information that we can gather in this process. Now with that, we want to move to the subject of how we use race and ethnicity in the redistricting process. And there's really two areas of law that we need to navigate and in essence stay between. And so the first one is the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution's Equal Protection Clause. And the second one that we'll talk about is the Federal Voting Rights Act. So under the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution under the Equal Protection Clause, what case law has shown over time is that the courts prohibit the use of race as the predominant factor in redistricting, except in narrow cases. And so the key here is that race or ethnicity should not be used as the predominant factor. And we shouldn't be drawing districts based on racial gerrymandering. Now that being said, it doesn't mean that you can't use race and ethnicity at all because in fact, the census data is all broken down by race and ethnicity. And so, and so it doesn't prohibit all consideration of race. And race can be considered as a factor along with the traditional race-neutral redistricting criteria that we just talked about. And that consideration of that traditional criteria should be always the premise of why we draw boundaries for the trustee areas. It should never be subordinated to consideration of race. It should be contemporaneous. If the district or jurisdiction is ever accused of using race as a predominant factor, the evidence that the court will look at is direct testimony. You know, so things that are, you know, said on the public record in these meetings, circumstantial evidence like demographics, shape, changes, process in the public record. And if race is determined to be the predominant factor, a court applies what is called strict scrutiny, which is the highest level of scrutiny that would be applied to a particular issue. And so if race is determined by a court to be the predominant factor, the district would need a compelling interest, a compelling reason, or what is called a state interest for why it was done that way. The plan has to be narrowly tailored to accomplish whatever that objective was. And once again, there's a very high burden from the courts to pass legal muster. Now that being said, as I said before, you know, while we shouldn't use race as the predominant factor, it's not that we can't look at race and ethnic statistics at all. And in fact, the Federal Voting Rights Act demands it. And so under Section Two of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, the first thing is that the Federal Voting Rights Act prohibits any voting practice or procedure that results in the denial or abridgement of the right to vote based on race, color, or language minority status. And the way that it applies to redistricting is that if you create plans that result in what's called vote dilution, which deprives minority voters of an equal opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice, then you might be in violation of the Federal Voting Rights Act. And so as we go through this process, we don't want to unlawfully minimize or cancel minority voting strength. What's important here is not the intent of the board or the staff or your consultant, but it's the effect of the actual plan. So here, in this next slide, we have an example of what vote dilution looks like. The first example here is what's called fracturing. And so in this example, you have a jurisdiction with four districts and you have a minority population in that orange rectangle in the middle there. And as you can see in this particular plan, the minority population is split four different ways, diluting their vote across the jurisdiction. When in fact, they could probably be the majority of one or even two of those districts. And so this is what's called fracturing. And the idea is that the majority voting population in the jurisdiction, typically white or Caucasian, would routinely outvote them. You also have to be careful not to do what's called packing. And packing is the idea that you concentrate the minority voters into the smallest number of districts possible and thereby minimizing their influence as well. And so once again, in our jurisdiction with four districts, as you can see in the example at the bottom of the page, our minority population is an overwhelming majority in one district and it possibly is in two. And so this could be a potential packing problem, a potential legal violation of the Voting Rights Act. In order to find a violation of the Voting Rights Act, the Supreme Court has set three conditions for liability under the Federal Voting Rights Act. And these are what's called the gingles or the jingles criteria. And so the first one is the minority group must be sufficiently large and geographically compact to constitute a majority in a district. And certainly, we have large ethnic populations throughout the Community College District that, you know, that are sufficiently large and geographically compact. The minority group must also be politically cohesive, which means that they tend to vote collectively. And there also has to be evidence that a majority votes sufficiently as a block to enable it usually to defeat the minority's preferred candidate. And so if those three conditions are met, you're likely liable under the Federal Voting Rights Act and would have a violation under federal law. So in summary, once again, the key principles to keep in mind is that we want to strive for population equality. We want to focus on traditional redistricting criteria. We don't want to use race as the predominant factor, but we also want to make sure that we comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And we also want to establish and follow a good process. Next up, we just have a map of the current trustee areas across the district. And so I'll just leave it on this slide for a quick, for a few seconds. And this next slide is the 2020 demographic profile for the Community College District. The, once again, the ten-page demographic report that we provided to the district not only contains the U.S. Census data, but also contains a variety of statistical information from the American Community Survey, including citizen voting age population, as well as things like educational attainment, income, age, language status, and on and on and on. But there's a variety of information there, not only to help you, guide you through this process, but also to help you with your policy decisions over the next few years. As we can see here, this is the top lines of the census data. And if I didn't mention it earlier, I just want to mention that the census data that we use is what's called the State of California Adjusted Data. About ten years ago, the state of California passed a law that said that as jurisdiction does redistricting in the state of California, they must use what's called the suggested data. And so what the state does is it takes the census data that came out in August of last year and it reallocates the state prison population back to their place of origin. So where they were lived former, prior to incarceration. And so, and so the state went through this adjustment of the data back in August and September of last year. And this adjusted data comes, came out in September. And you should be very proud of the fact that University of California in your, in your district is the one who houses all of this data and does all of this work for the state of California. And you can find it all on a website called the statewide database, which goes back at least to the, to the nineteen nineties in terms of census data, elections data, and a variety of other data that's been used for redistricting over the last four decades. In terms of the data, what's important to point out here is I talked about before, the deviation, right? And so as you look at the deviations between the seven trustee areas, the highest deviation is in trustee area seven. Trustee area seven has a deviation of ten point four percent. And then the lowest deviation, the district, the trustee area with the lowest population is trustee area six, which has a negative five point six percent deviation. And so by adding those two numbers, we get once again to sixteen percent as our total overall deviation. And so we do need to make adjustments to the current trustee area boundaries because if nothing else, we need to get this number under ten percent, that sixteen percent once again. And as you, as you look at this, you know, trustee areas seven, six, and five are all fairly close together, right? And so we probably have to make some adjustments there. And then with the other trustee areas, we'll take a look at that as well as we go through this process. And just our last slide here, in terms of the timeline. So we have the summary and presentation that we're doing this evening. We'll be back at your next board meeting on February eighth to present a draft map or draft maps, depending on the will of the subcommittee. And then we'll come back once again at your last board meeting in February on the twenty-second to present the final map where the board would adopt that final map and resolution. As I mentioned earlier, the district based on state law needs to be completed with this process by February twenty-eighth of this year. If the district does not complete the process by February twenty-eighth, the County Board of Education takes over and will complete this process on behalf of the district by April thirtieth. And, and we'll say, you know, and as it says in state law, it will send the district a bill for that work. And so really, the opportunity for the board to redraw these boundaries is next month. And if we're unable to complete that by the twentieth of February, then it passes on to a different jurisdiction. But based on the schedule and based on the, my discussions with staff, I feel very comfortable that we'll be able to finish by the end of next month. So with that, Madam President and Board Members, I'll turn it back over to you for any questions or comments. Happy to answer anything that you may want to know.
Yes, actually, if there are any trustee comments, please go ahead and ask the question. Yes, actually, if there are any trustee comments, please go ahead and ask those questions. Sorry, my computer just froze, so go ahead and ask those questions. I can't pick on you because.
Okay, I have a question. This is VP Delphine Polk. Thank you for this presentation. I was telling President Napolea Bellary earlier that I'm really passionate about redistricting. This has been an issue of my, that I've been following for some time. I'm curious, just out of, you know, the, from this process, what was your, like, biggest takeaway? Were there any changes that you thought were surprising? Anything like that? I'm just curious what your thoughts would be.
In terms, in terms of the, the district or, you know, or it just.
The district, yeah.
Yeah, I think the, you know, a, because I live in Southern California and I grew up in the East Bay, you know, I actually went to junior high in the East Bay in sixth grade. So I know the area well. I would say the biggest takeaway is not necessarily respected to the district, but I think it's in general with the census and where you've had a tremendous undercount, particularly in the African-American and Latino populations throughout the State of California. And so I think, and, you know, you have to remember that with the census, it was the first time that was done all electronically. And so there wasn't people, we didn't get census forms mailed to our house. You know, it was all pretty much done online. And so I think with that, in the combination with the pandemic, really led to low undercounts, particularly in more transient and, and lower income communities. Where you have a lot more renters, you have a lot more poverty, that sort of thing. And so I think the response rate really, really was surprising in terms of that. Now that being said, there's not much we can do about that in terms of this process. We have to deal with the data that we have. I think the other, the other interesting thing is just in general is trustee area seven covers most of kind of the downtown of West Oakland. And so that's really where the growth has been in the district as opposed to other areas. And it certainly makes sense with a lot of the redevelopment that's been taking place. But I think with the built out, with much of the district really built out, it just makes more sense that you're going to see more growth in the more urban areas of the district as opposed to kind of the outlying cities. So those are really the main things. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to this. I'm very, very fond of the, the area. Spent a lot of time actually vacationing in the East Bay. Not in the last two years, but, but certainly previous to that. And so I'm really interested and really excited to be a part of this project.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yeah, real quickly, when we look at area seven, that encompasses Emeryville. Area four encompasses Albany. Do you know offhand what the populations of Albany and, and Emeryville are? Are they comparable? In the last redistricting, Emeryville was taken out of area four and put into area seven. My guess is we've also had growth in Emeryville because there's been a lot of housing development in that area. But do you happen to know right off?
That's a great question. Board Member, if you give me just a couple more seconds, I can get that information for you.
I'm just, you know, kind of thinking ahead and looking and saying, all right, if area six has gotten smaller, area seven has gotten bigger. It might be that one way of making that adjustment is shifting entire cities. But, you know, sometimes that happens. That happened in my district. In the sense, in the redistricting 10 years ago, I lost all of Emeryville, retained all of Albany. The most of the Berkeley boundaries pretty much stayed the same. But in that, in that census, Berkeley had grown quite a bit. Like 10,000, you know, by 10,000, something like that. And, and so it made sense to lose a whole city.
So just to answer your question, the population of the city of Emeryville is 12,905. And the population of Albany is 20,271. So, yeah, you've got roughly 7,500 more people in Albany than in Emeryville.
All right, well, I guess we're going to have some interesting work to do.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun and it'll be quick.
It's going to be way faster than I think probably any of us are comfortable with. But this is the timeframe that we've got. I guess we've been busy with other stuff. Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions? No other questions? Okay, I think we are good. Thank you for that very succinct and to the point and very substantial, substantive presentation. That was very helpful for me, definitely, and I think for many of our trustees. So Andrew, we will see you again and again and again.
Yes, yes, you'll see me a lot in, in February for sure. And thank you so much, Madam President. Well, see you soon.
Yes, bye-bye. Take care. Thank you. Well, let's move on to the next item. And the next item is 6.1. Speaking of redistricting, 6.1 and 6.2 are informational items. And 6.1 is redistricting the ad hoc subcommittee. And as we just heard a second ago, given the very strict and incredibly tight timeline that we have to adhere to in order to ensure we correctly and appropriately complete our redistricting plans. We've created or I have appointed members to a subcommittee to assist the demographer and provide oversight. So the three individuals that will be on the subcommittee will be Jelena Bodia, trustee Linda Handy, and trustee Nikki Gonzalez-Un. And they will be meeting with the demographer. And then I believe, according to our schedule, the demographer will be back on February 8th and then February 22. Any questions on that? Okay, let's move on to 6.2, our standing board committee appointments. And once again, we know that we have established two committees. One is the Finance and Budget Committee, and the other is the Student Success and Accreditation Committee. We are just at this particular point, since we're doing this yearly, we are affirming the membership for both, for the Finance and Budget Committee. It stays, it is staying the same. And so the chair of that particular committee is Vice President Delphine Polk. And then the two other members of that committee are trustee Bill Withrow and myself. And for the Student Success and Accreditation Committee, right now, we only have two committee members, and that is trustee Gonzalez-Un and myself. If I have any other board members that would like to be on that committee, please, please, please contact me so that we can full, fill up the composition and have three members on that committee, just like the other standing committee. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. May I have a motion for the consent calendar, please?
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. And then who was my second?
Our second.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez-Un. Roll call, please.
Madam President?
Yes, yes.
I have a question on 7.1.
Okay, 721? I'm sorry, 7.1?
Yeah.
Okay, remember, trustee Jenkins, we do this at the beginning when we go through the agenda items. So if there's something that we're going to pull out and discuss, we have to pull it out at that particular time. If, if I have no other board members that.
I do. I'm sorry, and I, I'd actually wanted to have pulled 11.1. I don't know if that, you know, I lost power for, for a long time here. I wasn't in the meeting, but I did have a question about that item.
Okay, other board members, am I, do I have any individuals that oppose pulling this out and just discussing these two items?
That's acceptable to me. Bill, is that acceptable to use the maker of the motion?
Yes, it is. It's fine.
Okay, okay, so why don't we actually pull out those two items and continue on with the consent calendar for everything else? Kevin, again, that's 7.1. And then Linda, that is 11, I'm sorry, 11.1.
11.1.
11.1. Okay, so we are doing the.
President of Bellaries, I thought that, that you had pulled 7.3 for discussion.
I did.
Beginning, so we're talking about three different items now, right? Just a point of clarification.
Yes, that's exactly right. So 7.1, 7.3, which was originally extracted, and then 11.1. So this motion is for everything else but those three that we've just pulled out for discussion. Okay, roll call, please, on the consent calendar for the other items.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Un?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Jenkins, 7.1.
So on 7.1, there's an estimated airfare of $3,288, which is under first class, which would violate our board policy. Could somebody explain that to us?
I'll give that to the chancellor, through the chancellor, to whomever you'd like to answer that.
What we do when we do our traveling conferences, put the estimated cost, if anyone wants to upgrade, then that amount is not reimbursed at that rate. But that is what they put on their traveling conference request, so that it's reflected there. So if you made a, for example, if you went, we went to a conference, and at the conference, an individual says, well, I want to upgrade from whatever the standard room is, I want to go to the next level. Those costs come out of the individual's pocket. They do not come out of the district coffers for those amounts.
Thank you.
I have a question on that as well.
Okay, trustee Handy?
Okay, so again, I'm, I'm looking at, you're saying that, trustee Jenkins, you're saying that the airfare for what was from where to where was? You're saying that.
So San Jose to, IAD is what, Virginia or DC area? And so that's maybe, yeah, that's, the fare is $3,288.
Okay, but that's, that's like a $600 round trip airfare. So I don't know why anyone would even put that amount on that, even if it could go to the maximum, because that does raise questions. But we also have that, they also have the same restriction of purchasing fare where you get, you want to try to get at least a 30, a three-week advance, that we have that all requirement, that we need to try to purchase our fares, so that we will have the lowest fare possible. That's in board policy. So I know that in the past, we've had folks that weren't really aware and they just thought they, you know, just carte blanche. It wasn't like something devious or anything. It just, it happened. So that's something that we may just need to make people aware of or send this back and ask them to correct it and make sure. Because what happens is someone puts their, they go and they fly, and it never comes back until an audit or something that pops up. So I would just suggest we make sure that they don't put in an overestimate, but also adhere to those rules.
That we have to adhere to. That's one of the things that we do when people come back, is look at the receipts. And we also compare, excuse me, we also compare that to what our policies indicate. I know in this particular case, sorry, scratchy throat. In this particular case, the recommendation came from the Department of Ed, Dr. Marcy Boyd, who is our senior evaluator at the Financial Aid Title IV, recommended that we send at least two individuals back for this particular conference. And so that was why there was a short lag. As I reported, we met with her in December, December 20th. As in my board report, my last board report to you, we also met with her on the 5th of December, I believe. And so that was the recommendation coming from her. And hence, that's why there may have been some short notice in going because it wasn't something that we normally send individuals to. But based upon her recommendation, I felt it was important for us to get a broader view so that we can make sure that we address the concerns that have come up repeatedly in our ACCJC and our FIDM reports.
Yeah, and Chancellor Jackson, I have no challenges to them going at all. I'm just looking at.
The cost.
The cost, because even when I'm looking to book my flights, I'm looking, even though I'm in Oakland, I'm looking at San Francisco and other places for, for the best fares. Because, you know, San Jose may be higher flying to Washington DC. But San Francisco is just as accessible, and it's a whole different thing. Because I, you know, I take sometimes 15 students at a time, and I've never paid that much for, I mean, I never paid more than five, 500 at the most, 500 to 600 at the most for a round trip. And even now, Southwest goes, yeah, you know, yeah, you can't, there's so many ways of getting there without paying those exorbitant costs. So that's just, that's just our concern as we're asked to tighten our belts.
No, not a problem. Point well taken. And believe me, I like flying first class, but I don't do it on the district guide.
Right, that's why you save up all your points.
So point well taken.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Shall we vote on this? And I'll just, maybe, can I just make one comment? Chancellor, could, for the estimated airfare, and again, this is a thing we can talk about offline, can we not have the estimated airfare be the first-class estimated airfare going forward? And just kind of bring that down a little bit? I think, you know, you know, I don't know many of the details on here, but it seems like that would probably appease both auditors and, and your, your trustees to not have the estimated airfare be the first-class benchmark as opposed to one of the others.
Yes, especially when we know what those prices are, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor. All right, let us vote on this. Roll call, please.
Do we have a motion?
We do not.
No, no, we do not. Thank you, trustee Withrow.
Move approval.
Second, please. May I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Jenkins? Roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Un? He has left the meeting. Trustee.
He, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, okay. And then we're at 7.3, which is the board meeting calendar. I, the only reason I pulled that is because I do want people to know that even though on this calendar, January 25, it says that we should be having the update on the budget on this particular agenda. We recognize that we do not, but it will be on the next agenda. So I just wanted people to know that even though we're approving this particular calendar, today, we do not have the budget on our agenda, but we understand that and we will have it at the next agenda, next meeting. That's it. Roll call. Our first motion, please.
Some move.
Thank you, trustee Withrow.
Second.
You, trustee Handy. Thank you, trustee Handy. Okay, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, let's move on down to action items. 12.1, I'll give that to you, Chancellor.
Is that the one that I pulled was 11.1?
Yes.
But you're right, 11.1, that is our last one for trustee Handy. Yes.
Okay, so after the, after the conversation, I think a couple of meetings ago, I brought this point up. We see yet another, it's basically comes down to a change order that is taking the budget for advertising from $50,000. the budget for advertising from fifty thousand dollars, the original contract, with an amendment in December of thirty thousand, and now a pending additional amendment to twenty thousand. That's a hundred thousand dollars for one college for placement of ads for their campaign. Now, the challenge that I have with this is, we have our entire department, media department budget, at one point was brought down to something like ninety thousand dollars. And that budget had been slashed. And then at that time, we allocated, I remember at one time, eighty thousand to Berkeley City College, exorbitant amounts to Laney College to address low enrollment for advertising, and then denied Merritt Colleges with Dr. Marie Burns, who was the only one who actually did not have low enrollment at the time. The twenty-five thousand, my colleagues voted against ratifying the money that had already been expended. But the challenge is this, we are the Peralta Colleges. But right now, we've got about three hundred thousand dollars of separate advertisement, and it doesn't make sense, because it could, everything else has Peralta Colleges and all of the four colleges. If you're sending out advertisements, I get these things in my door, you know, I get the mail coming in, I have some right now, which is nice, but we need to think of as one college, because it just doesn't make sense for each college to have more money expenditures for advertisement than our advertising department of the district office. And we've had a lot of personnel changes. I know that there were reasons why people wanted to start doing their own thing and getting away from the district. And I know there are reasons why the district's budget was slashed. But we're kind of, I think this doesn't make sense to me, that we have a department that would be doing our advertising and all that for us, for coming out of under one umbrella. But we have somehow now protracted off into four different entities, spending more money than we ever had. And the worst part about it, that there's no documentation to show that this is something that is really bringing us back, because enrollment continues to plummet. So in this particular incident, we're looking to, to have ties with the Bay Area News Group. Bay Area News Group has never been a friend of Peralta. They printed only negative articles. At one point, they printed the same article sixty-nine times, attacking the district in a very derogatory manner. And now we're giving them a hundred thousand dollars to advertise. But I tell you, I needed some newspaper, because I have a problem here in my house, and I needed to get some newspapers. I, what, door after door, there's nobody that gets those newspapers. It's all electronic now. So I think we have to think differently about this. Not only, it's not just the amount of money that's going out, but where is the evidence that any of this is really helping with enrollment or anything else? I think this is something that needs to be looked at. It needs to be, again, looked at where it was supposed to be coming out of the district office, and how maybe we should be giving that department enough money to actually function properly. And, and, and then again, look at, how do you start, you know, we really have this thing about change orders. And this is clearly a change order. If you start with a contract with fifty thousand dollars, and then within the same, within a one-year period, you add an additional fifty thousand, we have actually had policies against that. You can come in with one, but you can't come in low so that we approve it, and then keep nickeling and diming us until you're up to a hundred thousand dollars. So this is a sticking point for me, because, you know, as trustee Brown used to say, we look at this, we spend Peralta's money like we spend our own money. So we're very, very careful in looking at, this is not something that I would allow happening with, under my own money, because it just doesn't seem like it's getting us the results that it wants. I'm not saying that we don't need to be publicized, because we do. But I think that our targeted market is not looking at newspapers. Our targeted market are looking through social media, and maybe things that come directly to them. But I wouldn't even try mailing that directly to them, unless you mail it to the entire population, because our target marker, they're moving all over the place. Young people, their address is one place, but they're staying somewhere else. So I think that this is something that we really need to look at, so that we make sure we're getting a real return, because we need this. We need this enrollment increase. But I don't think that just throwing money at it is going to give us any results at all. I really don't. Thanks.
So President Reese, I'd like to address part of what, excuse me. Okay, I'd like to address part of what trustee Handy brought up, and then I'd like to turn it over to Director Johnson to also address maybe some of the specifics of how these funds are being spent. I agree wholeheartedly with you. I, I went to a district where there was no PIO, so to speak, each campus, and that was Chabot-Laspecitas, each campus did its own thing, spent a lot more money than what you're looking at right now, a hundred thousand dollars, one college was spending that much. And trying to bring that district together, so that they could recognize that we needed to have a common theme, that we need to have consistency, that we had to have branding, so that just like now, if you see Swish, everybody knows that's Nike. Nobody has a say Nike anymore. They know by looking at the Swish sign, that that's Nike. And the benefits of that, and what we've found is that our students in this district relate to the colleges, not to the district. So whenever we market, if you see any marketing that comes out of the district office, out of Mark's area, it has the logo of the district as well as the four colleges. And usually, the four colleges, their logos are much more prominent than the district logo. So it's changing that, so that people don't see it as, you know, I'm Laney, and I'll pick Laney, because it is the largest and has the largest budget, to be able to do things, decides how Laney wants to spend their money. The district doesn't say, Mark doesn't tell them how to do that. So it's going to take a while to change that mindset, just like it did when I was at Chabot-Laspecitas, because people look at it, just like you said, this is my money. My money being my college's money, and I want to spend it on XYZ, versus looking at putting that in a pool and using it to leverage, so that all the colleges benefit from it, and doing special things for a particular college, but under the rubric of leveraging it, because there's more money, and is much more efficient to go out for advertising when you're doing it for four than it is for one. That's going to take a change in the institutional climate, and we're not there yet. So in the meantime, I think the tact that Mark has been using is to pull the colleges PIOs together, as well as some of the classified professional staff, so that they work in tandem, so that they can see the benefit of the good of the whole as being good for the part. And this, I think, is an example of that. We received an additional twenty thousand dollars from College of Alameda, because they had the funds out of a grant or out of some other fund that they could use to augment the budget that Mark had already established, to do some additional work for College of Alameda. So with that, Mark, if you want to talk a little bit more, but I understand where you're coming from, I feel the same way, but we aren't there yet within this district, because people don't see the benefits of not doing their own thing.
But I may have misunderstood. So is the twenty only a portion? Because I was looking at it as the full one hundred thousand was for College of Alameda.
No, no.
Okay, so I misunderstood that.
So Mark, why don't you, if I got it wrong, you know, I know we talked about this, I talked with Dr. Jones about it, but if I missed something, maybe fill in the blanks.
Yes, sir. Jackson, you are exactly correct. So that, we started with Bay Area News Group with fifty thousand dollars, and that was our budget for them for the whole year. We spent thirty thousand dollars in the fall of 2021, and, and that campaign performed very, very well. So because of our declining enrollment, and because that campaign seemed to perform very, very well, we asked the trustees to approve another thirty thousand, which you graciously did. So I appreciate that. For that extra thirty thousand, for the spring 2022 campaign, we created a wide variety of college-branded assets, because the college brands seem, you know, they have demonstrated, demonstrably resulted in a higher click rate compared to the Peralta ads when we're promoting enrollment, you know, for enrollment-specific things, the colleges poll better. So we created banner ads and videos and MP3 files for audio that were all college branded. And my colleagues at the College of Alameda really liked what we had done for them. And they said, could we give you twenty thousand dollars and make it go that much farther? And we said yes. So that's what you're approving there, is it's actually a nice example of collaboration and teamwork across the district with the colleges and the district marketing office, to give College of Alameda a bit of an extra push. And I hope that the other three colleges are watching, because we're seeing some really great results with COA.
And that's exactly what I want to see, is the collaborative process. I understand the need for the individual, Merritt College and all that, but I'd like to see, even if Merritt College is putting it, putting theirs out, and they're getting their clicks, we still have on the bottom Peralta Colleges, small. It doesn't have to be predominant. That's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for enough funding to be in one pool, especially in the district, because I know we defunded that, and it shouldn't have happened, but that's exactly what happened. And so I know, I'm looking that we have enough money in one place to make sure that all four children are fit. And I have no problems with the president's doing theirs equally. It's just that if we're going out with something that could just as easily have the names on the bottom, just have a brand, even though you have your individuals, but to have a Peralta brand, even if it's just a border, and that we use that money, and we find the best practices, so that we know that we're getting clickbacks, more so than newspapers, but for like, like you said, for other things, the social media. Because that's where, that's where they are. That's where they're looking. Thank you.
And Chancellor, I was just thinking about what trustee Handy just said, I'll just add two things. One, I think the background analysis probably doesn't explain as much as it should, because I thought this was also only College of Alameda, and now hearing that it's for the district, it certainly makes much more sense. So that would be, that would be good. I certainly missed that in the gender review. And then the other thing, which I know that we've talked about at the trustee meetings often, and I'm not sure exactly what mechanism it would be, but to have this loop around, where we spend this much money in our marketing, how is it working for us, right? Because we're not seeing it in enrollment yet, those positive outcomes in enrollment, but that's also a process date for sure. But we want to make sure that what we were putting in is resulting in something. And so figuring out what that loop, and then letting the trustees know, I think, would be really good in terms of, you know, our investments, and what is the return on investment as it relates to marketing. All right, any more questions? I don't see any more questions. All righty, let's move on now to action items. We do, twelve point one, I'll give this to you, Chancellor.
We actually need a motion. Sorry, President, we actually need a.
What would I do without you, Sasha? Okay, may I have a motion for eleven point one? Thank you, trustee Handy, second. Trustee Whitrow? Okay, let's vote.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleia Bellarice?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and for a third time, twelve point one, Chancellor Jackson, this is for you.
You're on mute.
Can't hear you.
I know, it's needed. As I stated in my chancellor's report, when we had our retreat at the beginning of this year, on the fourteenth, I believe, one of the things as part of that retreat with Dr. Helen Benjamin was for us to look at our mission statement. It had gone through the participatory governance process. It was presented to the board in March of last year. At that particular meeting, it was tabled, because the board wanted to have some time to, to look at it, to review it, and to compare it to what some of the other mission statements were at other community college districts, and look at our own mission statement that was currently existing. Based upon the work of the board at the last retreat, the mission statement was approved tentatively, it was not voted on, and so it is coming for ratification at this time. The reason that this is so important is it provides the linchpin for us as we go into our strategic planning and our educational master planning. The colleges have already begun that process, their mission statements were approved and adopted by the board. And so this is the last part, is the district's mission statement for the strategic planning process, and we recommend approval.
And then the first, can I have a motion? About, please.
Move approval.
Trustee Handy, second?
Second.
Trustee Jenkins, discussion.
No questions?
None. All right, roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleia Bellarice?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Twelve point two, consider readoption of resolution number twenty-one slash twenty-two hyphen fifty-one for District Brown Act-covered legislative bodies to continue conducting meetings via teleconference per California Government Code, section five four nine five three.
Move approval.
Number twenty-one. Okay, second? Second, trustee?
Trustee Handy's providing a second.
Are you providing a second? Okay. Discussion? All right, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
No.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Abstain.
Trustee Napoleia Bellarice?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I don't know if it passes with a no and two absent and an abstain. Natasha?
Do we have, we have four affirmative votes or three affirmative votes?
We have student trustee Hogan as a yes, trustee Whitrow as a yes, Handy as a yes, and Napoleia Bellarice as a yes.
So the motion does not pass.
Wait a minute, go back over that if you would, please.
Yes, thank you, trustee Whitrow.
You didn't call Gonzalez Ewan's name. Did he vote?
Yeah, I didn't hear trustee Gonzalez Ewan.
That's what I was asking about.
Did he drop out?
Yeah, he had to. He had to, yeah, yeah. So we have three, three yeses, one advisory, and then two no's. So given that we only have five.
Is it two no's or one?
It's one, it's one.
It was only one no, I abstained, Natasha.
An abstention is like.
Trustee Delphine Polk, you should vote.
I'm sorry?
Then you should, you should, you should vote for your.
Either way.
Yeah.
For the purposes of this meeting, I want to make it really clear, for the purposes of this meeting, I'm going to vote yes, as we have two trustees that are absent. But I have abstained from this vote in the past for a number of reasons.
Thank you, trustee Polk.
Motion passes.
Okay. And now let us move on to twelve point three. Consider approval of resolution twenty-one slash ninety-two hyphen fifty-eight, approving College of Alameda. Consider approval of resolution twenty-one slash ninety-two hyphen fifty-eight, approving College of Alameda workability three programs, three-year contract renewal with the Department of Rehab, in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight. Do we need a presenter on this, uh, chancellor, Dr. Jackson? I'm sorry, Dr. Jones? Or, motion?
Was it true?
I, I believe, I, I'm not sure. What was, what was the question regarding?
Let me get, let me get the motion. So we have trustee Handy. Do we have a second for that?
I have, I actually have trustee Whitrow, who motioned originally with Handy as a second.
Second.
Okay, okay. And do we have any discussion on this at all? All right, maybe we don't need a presentation. Okay. Then let us vote.
Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bellaries.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we are at thirteen point one. Board of trustees report. Uh, trustee Jenkins.
Pass.
Hey, trustee Whitrow. Hey, trustee Handy.
Just a really short one. Um, I'll be presenting with two, um, trustees from California at the, um, California Community College League, um, trustees conference Friday. Um, I'll be, um, presenting on the excellent, at the ETP, the Excellence and Trusteeship Program, talking about the trustees' role. So kind of excited to, um, be one of the, one of the few in-person things with trustees from across California. And I believe Dr. Jackson is going to be presenting as well at that conference, so Peralta will be represented.
Hey, trustee Hogan, student trustee Hogan.
That was an accident, sorry. Now you can pass.
Would you like to report out at all, student trustee Hogan? You're welcome to.
Um, report what? I can't hear you.
Oh, it's just the board of trustees' report.
Oh, no, I don't need to report anything. I'm just happy to be back.
Wonderful, welcome back.
And we're happy to have you back. We're happy to have you back.
Thank you.
Sure are, sure are. Um, Vice President Delphine Polk.
Um, yes, so, uh, about a week and a half ago, I was on a panel, um, with Congresswoman Barbara Lee um, on remembering the insurrection of our nation's capital that happened just over a year ago. Um, I was really happy to be included in that and to represent Peralta, um, not just as the Area Six trustee, but also as someone who is representing, um, the Latinx population within Alameda County and within Congresswoman Lee's district. Um, and so it was a really great discussion with faith and community leaders. I was, um, like I said, very happy to be included um, and to be out there representing our district. Um, and then lastly, I want to send a warm welcome to everybody, um, for coming back to school, either virtually or on campus. Um, and I wanted to say, um, that I wanted to welcome, um, Dr. Stephanie Droger, who I think is on this call, um, who I think was introduced at our retreat, but I also wanted to just acknowledge that she's here um, and the work that she's doing with Chancellor Jackson. Um, and yes, Chancellor Jackson, welcome to campus as well. It's great to see you. So with that, I will say goodnight.
Wonderful, thank you, uh, Vice President Delphine Polk. And you fill my thunder. Welcome again, uh, Dr. Droger, and, uh, wonderful to see you, uh, Chancellor Jackson at the district. Um, and to all the faculty and staff and students that are back on campus. Um, this is, and I know that we kept, we keep saying it, but really is uncharted territory and we are trying our best and we are working things, um, and, and doing things as they happen. So, um, number one, the little patience, but number two, also incredible gratitude for all that you all are doing. And with that, I will go to announcements. So that is you, Vice President Delphine Polk.
That is me. I'm still getting used to that. Give me just a minute.
Okay, of course, of course.
About that.
No, no, no.
Um, yes, so announcements for tonight's spring twenty twenty-two semester began on January twenty-fourth, but it is not too late to sign up for classes. Sunday, January thirtieth, is the last day to add without special permission. Visit peralta.edu or the college websites to enroll. That's the first announcement. Second announcement, College of Alameda is hosting an informational brunch on campus tomorrow, Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, from ten AM to one PM. Learn about financial aid, health services, career services, access on Puente, EOPS, next up, Cal Works Library and more, plus free tacos. Third announcement, the Bond Measures Oversight Committee is meeting tomorrow, January twenty-fifth. Um, I don't know if that's tomorrow, but, um, is meeting soon, uh, January twenty-fifth at five thirty PM via Zoom. For more information, you can visit the Peralta Bond website at build.peralta.edu. Um, lastly, the next meeting of the Board of Trustees is coming up Tuesday, February eighth. I believe that is all the announcements that I have. Chancellor, I believe you might have had one as well.
I did have an announcement. Um, I, and I was hoping that, um, our Vice President Delphine Polk and, uh, trustee Jenkins might make the announcement, but they will be attending, um, the ETW, uh, conference coming up with the league this weekend.
Oh, yes, of course.
And I know you forgot, but that's why you said, I think Dr. Jackson has a comment. So, um, they are starting out like our other trustees in the past in terms of additional professional development for our board members. And so, uh, in addition to trustee Handy, who will be there presenting just as I am, we will also have two of our board members that will be there attending the workshops that are being put on by the league. Um, Friday and Saturday are the days for the ETW, and then on Sunday and Monday is the legislative update. And so I hope to get some additional information, um, about that, and we'll bring it back to the district. So that concludes our announcements.
Fantastic call. Well, it is nine o'clock, eight fifty-four. We are done for the evening. Thank you all. Welcome back, and we will see you in a couple of weeks, right?
I'm so excited to have electricity again.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye, good night.